Hi, Mr. Schweitzer.
Hi.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Halepka.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson, Ms. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Hi.
Mr. Heckman.
Hi.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Pirlo. Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Caligari.
Hi.
Mr. Fotus.
President.
Mr. Avery.
Hi.
And Ms. German.
Aye.
All right, thank you all, and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty of the first of all.
Thank you all, and thank you for getting the flag. Okay, today, Ms. Tracy, are there any changes to our tentative agenda as published?
No changes to the agenda.
Thank you. In the January 28th email, you received draft minutes from the January 20th, 2022 meeting as everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections in any one say? Are changes? If not, may I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Here come.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the introduction of the Transfer Station Amendment to the Solid Waste Management Plan 760 Rolling Mill Road. Mr. Richard Keller from the Department of Public Works in Transportation is with us this evening to present to the board. Please welcome Mr. Keller, and can you all turn off your sound so we can hear him? Thank you.
Thank you very much for the introduction. This evening, we are in the process of introducing a proposed transfer facility amendment to the Baltimore County Ten Year Solid Waste Plan. For those of you that were here last fall, you may recall, we had a different amendment about recycling in large buildings, and this is a similar process that we need to get approval from the planning board, and we also need to have a public hearing on this particular measure. The transfer station would accept both municipal solid waste and construction demolition material from the Baltimore region and be financed through private capital. Approximately 5% of the material will be recovered for recycling, and approximately 143,000 tons of material or 500 tons a day will be processed. So my purpose here today is to introduce this particular amendment to the planning board. You have, you see a copy of the document on the screen, and we submitted that to the staff earlier. And I want to take a few seconds and just thank Crystal for all the work that she did in helping us get to this process. And my understanding is, is that at this point, either I or you will ask for a public hearing on Thursday, February 17th at 5:00 p.m.
Where is it transferred to? What is, what is the word transfer?
You're on mute, Nancy.
I'm sorry? I don't, I, I do not know where, you know, specifically where the material is going to be transferred to. It would probably be to private facilities in the region.
Do any of the other board members have any questions for Mr. Keller?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Is this, is this transfer station going to be located approximately on or near the old eastern stainless property?
I, to be honest with you, I would have to get back to you on an answer to that. I do not know.
Okay, all right.
And I will get back with an answer on the, on the transfer question as well, prior to the meeting on the 17th.
So is this kind of like a public-private partnership?
No, it is a private facility, but it has to go through our amendment process.
We had heard at the last, I guess it was at the 2030, or maybe it was when we talked, when we had somebody for the budget, they said that they were basically down to the last facility or area for a landfill. Is this, is this a way to help with that? Is that the plan?
It, that is certainly one of the possibilities is, is to take some of the material that we go to the landfill. Do we have any similar facilities already in the county? I, I, I'm not aware of any, but again, I will check on that.
Is, is, it says that the total material recovered for recycling, is, is that typical 5%?
It may be somewhat on the, on the low side, but again, you have to remember, it's 5% of the total material, not, so it's just, it's just part of the C and D that's going there.
Any other questions or comments?
Nancy, if I may, if I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, you had a question?
I was just saying, can you define what C is?
Instruction and demolition.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Richard, I think, as you see from the questions that have been, first of all, it's very good to see you, my friend. It's been a while.
Hey, Steve.
Probably two years, actually. Except, except on these little screens. So you can see by the questions, the kind of preparation that you'll need to undergo in anticipation of the public hearing. But I think a key is the question about what is the impact on eastern sanitary landfill? And whether or not this then diminishes the material that goes into the landfill? Or how does that alter really the, the whole solid waste stream that I know that the county is taking a pretty aggressive look, look at? So appreciate you responding today.
Thank you. The, the individual that, the gentleman that asked the question about the facility, would you repeat your question about whether, where the, you, you had a question about where the facility is located? That it was near?
I was, yeah, I was asking whether this was to be located, I'm not sure how big the transfer station would be, but would it be located somewhere near or on the, the same location as the old eastern stainless company there? Well, it's been replaced by another company since. But I, I know it is eastern stainless on the rolling mill road.
Okay. I will check into that.
And, and Richard, if I may, I, I did one of the aerial views to see where it is. It's right up against a train track not too far from other residential. You may want to provide an aerial for the, for the public and for the planning board to show its location and proximity to, to other activity. But yeah.
I'm just curious.
Go ahead, Mark, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, is, is, do we have to notify the public? Is there a hearing? Do, do neighbors know that it's coming?
The public has, they've been notified by press release, and there is a notice and sign at the facility.
Our community planners are also aware of it, Mark. In case there's any outreach to them, they're, they're aware and can notify the, the community people about the public hearing so they can express their concerns if any.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to thank our planning board members for their thoughtful questions, and I'd like to call for a motion to set a public hearing.
Let me make the motion. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing regarding the Transfer Station Amendment to the Ten Year Solid Waste Management Plan for Thursday, February 17th, 2022 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Halepka, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Other business. Ms. Tracy will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting. Ms. Tracy.
Thanks, Madam Chair, members of the board. Recent county legislation of interest to the board, Bill 110-21 Zoning Regulations Signs for the purpose of permitting a certain joint identification sign in the DR 5.5 zone for certain uses under certain circumstances. Bill 112-21 Planned Unit Development's Extension of Time for State of Emergency for the purpose of extending the time period with, with, within which a planned unit development concept plan is required to be filed after adoption of the council resolution during a local state of emergency. Bill 113-21 Backyard Chickens for the purpose of permitting backyard chickens and other fowl under certain circumstances, defining certain terms, providing for a licensing scheme, providing for requirements for shelter and other structures, providing certain care requirements, setting certain limitations on the number of backyard chickens permitted on certain acreage. And last is Resolution 2-22 Approved County's Contribution Purchase of Certain Development Rights Easements on Property. A resolution, a resolution to approve the county's contribution toward the purchase of certain development right, rights easements on property in accordance with Title II, Subtitle V Agriculture Title Article, Annotated Code of Maryland, and Article 24 Land Preservation Baltimore County Code. That ends the report.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. And this is the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Second, or in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We've got two minutes because we can't start the next public hearing until exactly 4:30. So take a two-minute breather, and then we'll get reconvene.
If I had it at 5:30, it's, it's a 4:30?
We have a public hearing at 4:30, and then there's the CIP is at 5:30.
Okay.
But at this time, I don't think we have any speakers. Is that still correct, Ms. Tracy?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I got, I got one minute.
Kathy, you're still on mute yourself.
That's funny.
Well, we're either not muted or muted and talking. So I don't, by, by the time we get this right, we won't be doing it anymore.
Nancy, it was funny, the, the chicken thing was the first thing we did, like when we joined the board, remember that?
I remember that. Have the chickens been behaving?
I, I, I don't know. It's been like eight years now, so it's funny, it finally got law.
Steve, are you hearing any problems about the chickens?
No, I just hear a rooster down the street from me. But no, the, the council was just beside themselves with excitement that this got passed finally after so many years, and everybody was talking about the great benefits of having local eggs and what have you. But, so no, they were, they were very pleased that someone, it was Councilman Marks finally pulled the people together and got it done, so.
Well, we're glad, because I love chickens, but.
I talked about how long it had taken to get to this point. So it was, just as you and Todd just said, it was.
Long time.
It was eight years, because it was about, I, I remember reading a whole article about the impact of rats with chickens, and it was bizarre. We had like all kinds of, you know, stuff on it.
All right, well, on that note, we're going to start our, our public hearing. So good evening again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board Public Hearing for the Basic Service Maps. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board, and we'll start with a roll call to account for the members that are with us here tonight. So when you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Hartman. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Pirlo. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari.
Aye.
Mr. Fotus.
Aye.
Mr. Avery. I think he's still on here with us, correct?
He is.
Okay, thank you.
Aye, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Avery, you're fine. At the Baltimore County Planning Board meeting on January 20th, 2022, Mrs. Erin McKenna Straley from the Baltimore County Department of Public Works in Transportation introduced the Basic Service Maps. Mrs. Straley is here to further present the Basic Service Maps to the board. Following Mrs. Straley's presentation, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak, and there's none signed up to speak, but they have the opportunity to write in the chat if they'd like to do that. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Straley.
And Nancy, I think you missed Bev when you were doing roll call.
Oh, Bev, unfortunately, I think this part of my, she's not on the sheet, so Bev, I apologize.
Yeah, sorry about that, we had a little typo on there.
Yeah, and Mr. Mr. Hartman needs to come off too. I realized after I said his name.
No, no problem at all, Nancy.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, Ms. Straley.
Hi, good afternoon. Marsha, if you want to, I guess, allow me to share my screen. I can pull up the PowerPoint and then the maps. You should be the presenter, so you should just be able to click Share at the bottom of your WebEx. All right, looks like I do indeed.
Perfect.
All right. So as long as everyone can see, I'll start. Good afternoon, I'm Erin McKenna Straley, the Chief of the Water Design Section of the Department of Public Works in Transportation. I'll be presenting the draft Basic Services Maps for the Water Supply System. I'm joined by my fellow engineers and colleagues, Dave Baer and Chris Nebry, who will be presenting the draft Basic Services Maps for Public Sewer and Transportation respectively. The Basic Services Maps are part of the countywide master plan standards and guidelines relative to new development. These maps are updated annually per the county zoning regulations and include areas that are deficient in public water and sewer and transportation. Building permits may be withheld or deferred in areas designated as deficient on these maps. On May 7th, 2021, Bill 3221 was signed and enacted by the Baltimore County Council, adopting the revised maps for 2021. All of this information is available on DPWT's websites, website, as well as links to the 2021 maps and governing zoning regulations, and the website is on your screen. Each service area has its own standard for determining deficiency. Dave, Chris, and I will go into more detail on the subsequent slides, but to put these in the simplest of terms, a deficiency in the water system is determined by measuring the water pressure at the nearest fire hydrant. A deficiency in the public sewer system is determined based on the capacity of the sewage area, and a deficiency in the transportation system is determined based on the capacity of arterial and arterial collector intersections. So for the water supply, deficient areas in the water supply system are determined by a failing fire hydrant, by a failing fire flow test by a measurement of the residual water pressure at the nearest public fire hydrant. Fire flow testing standards are determined by the National Board of Fire Underwriters and currently constitutes a pressure of 20 PSI for effective firefighting. The city of Baltimore is the owner of the public water system and performs hydrant tests on a nine-year cycle. There are 14,536 hydrants in the county and 8,833 hydrants in the city. Fire flow tests can also be performed by request by paying a fee and using the form on their website. The county does not currently have any known deficient areas in the water supply system. So I'll pull up the map now so everyone can see. Sorry, just takes me a minute to switch back from the PDF into the, from the PDF to the PowerPoint. Okay, so now everyone should see the water map. And sorry, it's a very large file, and I can zoom in for everyone to see it. But there's really not much to look at for the water, since there's no deficient areas. We just scroll down so everyone can see. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dave Baer to talk about the sewer deficient areas.
Thank you, Erin, for the introduction. Good evening, everybody. I'm David Baer, and I'm working in the sewer design section. I'm going to be presenting, as Erin said, the sewer section maps. I'd like to start in the upper right-hand corner. I know it's going to be hard for Erin to zoom in a little bit, but the upper right-hand corner is Richland Manor area. That's in Perry Hall. So I'd like to give you a little description, I think, of what's going on at every area, and then give you an idea of what we're doing to try to eliminate these areas, the problems at these areas. Richland Manor is a wastewater treatment plant that's operated by the County Department of Public Works. What happens is during heavy rainfall, the, what, the treatment plant gets temporarily overwhelmed, and then we fail to meet our discharge permit requirements. So we've done a couple of rehabilitation projects out there, and we have one more planned that should help to reduce the infiltration from the groundwater that gets into sewer system that overwhelms the treatment plant. If we could move down to the middle right-hand side of the map where you see those two areas, that's in the Parkville area, and there are four sanitary sewer overflow structures located in that area. Again, it's a situation where the existing collection system gets overwhelmed during heavy rainfall. And what we've been doing in that area is we've done a lot of rehabilitation, so we've lined the existing sewers in that area, and we've built a relief sewer that's almost 90% complete. And we have another relief sewer that's going to start construction here in the very near future, and that will help us to hopefully eliminate those four areas. You go to the left top map there, Erin, for me. You'll see the Brooklynville area. That's another area where we have, during heavy rainfall, the sewer system becomes temporarily overwhelmed. And those, that area, there's our two relief sewer projects that are under design, and hopefully they'll be constructed here in the very near future. Go to the next one, Erin, there's one right at the city-county line. That's another area that we have a sanitary sewer overflow structure that exists. We've done a lot of rehabilitation in that area as well to try to eliminate that water that gets into the sewer system. We're working with Baltimore City to try to complete some additional improvements in that area, hopefully eliminate that SSO structure. If you go a little bit further left, again, it's the city-county line. That's in the Lockern area. It extends from the city-county line along Powder Mill. Again, there are four SSO structures there. And what happens again is during heavy rainfall, those activate, those sewers, structures are activated, and then we're working to do a lot of rehabilitation in that area. And we have two relief sewer projects, one that's been recently completed, and a second one that should start construction here, hopefully in the near future. And if we go to the bottom left, again, at the city-county line, we have another area that has four SSO structures. And again, that's another situation where we have, the sewer system gets overwhelmed during heavy rainfall. We've done a lot of significant amounts of rehabilitation in that area to try to reduce that water that gets in the system. And we're working with Baltimore City to complete some other additional projects that will help to eliminate those areas. And that concludes my presentation. And I think, I guess, Chris is up next for the traffic.
I'm here, hi, I'm Chris Nebry, traffic engineer for Bureau of Transportation, and I'm here to present the Basic Service Maps for traffic, said deficiencies. Just looking at, just presenting the map. We only made this change. Proposed so far was a former Fstead at Beaver Dam at Beardo and Padonia, going from F to C, which was F because of a bill. Just to explain a little, present a little bit about the transportation map, how we rate our intersections, our counters physically count every intersection, there is a rate of D, E, and F from the previous map every year when school is in session during the AM and PM peak hours and during Monday through Thursday. We do not count during Fridays. We found that typical traffic pattern that happened during Monday through Thursday is that, is that, that's a timeframe of typical traffic. And in addition, we don't count intersections nearby when there's, when it could be influenced by constructions or special events or incidents. When rating each intersection, we physically observe the traffic at each intersection. And not only do we count the vehicles, we count the, the movements, the congestion, which we, we call loaded cycles. And what a loaded cycle is, is for instance, when the last vehicle was stopped at the intersection when the light is red, we observe that car. And when it turns green, if that car does not make it through the intersection, we call that a failed loaded cycle. And depending on the percentage of loaded cycles that occur at each intersection, that's how we rate the, the intersection. So that's just like a visual on, on the congestion of the area. So when defining the traffic set, we also, the majority of the traffic should be oriented towards the deficient intersection, and about 50% of the traffic from the defined set goes through the intersection. So where, where we have failing intersections are in the pink areas. So they're, they're located all throughout Baltimore County, but they're all at state intersections for the F, Fsteads. And the Fsteads, we cannot develop there. The blue Seds are D intersections, and there's, there's no moratorium in them though. However, it's kind of just like a warning that it's, it's, congestion is ramping up. And the brown area, which we only have one, at the intersection of Perrin and Jopra, that, there is no moratorium at the area, but there's a limit on development on the reserve amount of capacity that could handle. So we don't have, a lot of these areas, we do not propose anything. We're now, we, for the Fsteads, we try to coordinate with the state to see if they could improve the traffic timings, because it's a matter of how much traffic goes through the intersection. But without any major road widening, pretty difficult to improve the level of services. And I think that concludes my presentation.
All right, and with that, we're happy to take any questions from the public or from anyone on the planning board.
The, the traffic that you said at the, the Beaver Dam one, I, I missed what he said there, that, that they down, it was always a C, and they tried to, the council made it a D or an E. Is it, is, is that what they're doing again?
Um, that's, um, that's up for them to do. I, I can't say what they're going to do. However, you're, you're, you are correct that it was, from our observations, it was a C intersection, however. From our observations, it was a C intersection. However, per bill on the twenty twenty-one map last year, it was an F. Therefore. When we present this, just based on our observations, it's just a C for now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? If not, thank you, Ms. Charlie and your team.
Nancy, if I may ask a couple of questions, please. Thank you. And this has to do with the sewer capacity. So Dave, you talked about the Brooklynville area. This is the Jones Falls Sewer Shed, I assume. That's now being studied by the Hazen Sawyer Consultant Team. When you say there are two relief sewer lines that are being. Worked on or in process. What is the time for those? What, when do they expect to be constructed?
That's a good question. One of them is in design and I don't think that that requires any offsite right away or any easements. And the other one does require some offsite easements. So that process has started. It's always difficult for me to guess how long that might take. But the process has started and I think they're actually, we're going to contact one of the property owners on Tuesday.
Very good. And as to Parkville, you talked about the sanitary overflow similarly with the heavy rains, which we're seeing an increase where we're seeing an increase. You indicate, I think, that there's also a relief sewer that's being either planned or in design or being constructed. Similarly, what's the timeframe on that one?
Yeah, one is ninety percent complete. And the other one, we had a ward recently, so the notice to proceed for that should be in the next month or two. And that will take maybe nine months to complete. Like I said, one is ninety percent done and the other one will start very shortly.
Okay, and then. For the benefit of Ms. Wolfson and for Mr. Warren, the Edmiston Avenue overbrook area over towards Catonsville, which is. As we know, really got a lot of that area got really hammered just a couple of years ago. What's the status of that? You said, I think, again, there's a relief sewer that's being either in design, construction. What's the status of that, please?
Yeah, that one, that area did get hammered quite significantly. I actually have a map that shows about ten inches of rain a couple of years ago. So that area was significantly affected by heavy rain. We've done a lot of rehab in that area, so we lined a lot of the sewer systems. We built a couple relief sewers. That's all been done. The issue is Baltimore City needs to complete some improvements on their side so that when their system becomes overwhelmed, it doesn't back up into the county. So the city's working their way through their consent order and it's going to take them a significant period of time, maybe another year or so before they get an idea of what they need to do.
Okay. And until these improvements are made, these various relief lines are put in place. What is the potential implication for any development or redevelopment?
Yeah, the area is a special concern. We prohibit any connections in that area.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, your detailed information.
Quickly, a question. So I see that there are commercial revitalization zones in areas within these, some of these failing areas. So how does that impact? That if they can't, if they've put a moratorium on development?
In the revitalization, this is how I understand it, is any development inside the commercial revitalization districts are exempt from the moratorium.
That's correct. So if it's a commercial revitalization district, Ms. Wolfson, it is part of the exemption under the current basic services law.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Nancy, I, I have a question and I guess it's mainly more for the sewer. Are the failing ones identified just by experience or do you, do you do any estimates? The, you know, the ten inches of rain on the west side was unusual, but I mean, you would have some sort of guideline of how much you. The system should be able to handle at any point. Or is it just, you know, where has it failed? And so that's where we look.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to talk about that west side over there in Catonsville, just for, for a minute, there are four overflow structures over there. And so when it, when there's heavy rain. The water actually exits those, exits the system through those pipes and gets into a storm drain or a sanitary sewer. So. That's when, that's when we know there's too much in the system, when it overflows.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have nobody, no one signed up to speak this evening, but Ms.
It looks like we just got a question in the chat.
Yeah, I was just going to go to Ms. Bensley and ask her if there's any comments in the chat that she can share, that she should share.
Yes, we received one question from Ms. Renee Hamidi. I apologize if I said that wrong. And it asks, when you say you can't develop at a failing intersection, within what distance of the intersection is development precluded?
It's defined at the shed. The shed is, the other way, the intersection defines the shed. So if you look at the basic service map. In the, more or less in the middle of the shed is the intersection and then where that shed. Is the boundary of that shed is on the F intersection. So for example, let's see if we could zoom out a bit. There at York and Burke, there's a shed associated with that intersection. And with, inside that shed is where the moratorium is applicable.
What defines the shed, Chris?
It's, it's an area. Where. Just from, from a given area, that's where fifty percent of the traffic goes towards the intersection. So it's, I would say a little bit of. Engineering judgment, I'll say that.
Ms. Hamidi is with the Valleys Planning Council. So if you went up to Lake Shawan and Falls Road. What would that traffic shed entail if you, if you could. Describe that basically.
Shawan and Falls because it's outside of the urdle, there is no traffic shed associated with that.
So it could never be identified as a failed intersection?
It's a failing intersection. But. As shown on the map, in the dark, dot at the intersection, however, there's no shed associated with it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bensley, is there any other questions?
Not that I am seeing on my end. Ms. Tracy, can you confirm that you didn't receive any as the host?
Yes, there are several other questions. And also from Ms. Hamidi, what ma, what makes a sewer area deficient versus of concern?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. The Richland Manor Treatment Plant, where we exceed the, the permit requirements is identified as a deficient area. And the areas where we have the SSOs are identified as the areas of special concern.
What's an SSO, Dave? Can't talk code here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry about that. Sanitary sewer overflow structure. I'm sorry. I apologize. That's a pipe that might connect from the sewer to the storm drain or from the sewer to the stream. Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that.
That's okay.
My apologies.
We do it all the time.
The next question is, can you be more specific about the improvement projects planned to the sewers in Brooklynville?
Yes, I can. They're. One to twelve inch sewer, I think, and they are both about a couple hundred feet long. If you want, the location is. Behind the Benedictine Sisters, if you know where that is, just off Joppa Road.
And I believe that completes all of the comments in the chat.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Tracy. And Dave, I thought I had a lot of piles on my desk.
I hate paper. Doesn't look like it, but I really do. I do hate paper. Thank you all for the opportunity to chat with you tonight. Thanks.
Well, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Ms. Straley and the rest of your team. You've done a great job. If there's no further questions, this is the conclusion of our public hearing. At this time, we will adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting, hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please note that the planning board will hold a virtual CIP meeting to hear agencies' presentation via a separate WebEx. It's a separate WebEx. Tonight at five thirty, the WebEx link to the CIP meeting was provided to the planning board members. The public can have access to this link on the Baltimore County Planning Board website. And I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. And to my fellow planning board members, we'll see you in a half hour.